I'll open this study session on February twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five with the planning commission at six thirty one P M. And we have one's topic tonight, and that's the study session for the master plan, master sign plan text amendment discussion. Staff, please begin.
All right, thank you very much. Before this evening, we're going to talk about some behind the scenes work we've been doing to prepare for a text amendment to the U L U C regarding master sign plans. So the project team includes myself, Jared Chipman, Andrea Vaughn, and Monica Roy in the planning department have been working on this. And you'll get to see them when we bring, when we bring this back for a discussion on the actual text for recommendation. Agenda, what is a master sign plan? Code amendment intent, engagement, master sign plan drafting strategy, and then process. So what is a master sign plan? Typically, a master sign plan allows locations to request signage plan for an entire site to create cohesive branding rather than parcel by parcel in a, in a larger subdivision. They can establish, establish regulations for size location design of signs that are compatible with the building and architecture. And they can allow for flexibility that other sign regulations sometimes lack. The U L U C currently references master sign plans. So there's, there are two locations in, in that document, ten, three, five, one, and ten, five, five, one that indicates ma- master sign plan. However, they both have reserved marked after master sign plan. So it was intended in the original code. Unfortunately, it, the regulations were not completed and it didn't get codified in that process. So we're looking to bring this back for, for your consideration. We intend to create a process that fits slash enhances the current sign code. And then the proposed, proposed process would be administratively approved. That's our recommendation with maximum signage parameters. So there's a number of different ways to do this. Some cities allow for master sign plans that are much more permissive yet, but they're approved by planning commission. Staff is proposing that we put some more guidelines on these items, but then it ends up being administrative process. The engagement and research, currently we've engaged with a number of different stakeholders. And then we've also looked at a number of peer communities, including City of Centennial, City of Lone Tree, Village Montgomery, Town of Brown, and City of Westminster. And that's just to name a few. We did look at a few other places as well since the original research was conducted. Master sign plan drafting strategy purpose. So these are our proposed purpose statements. Once again, the text isn't, isn't finalized. This is our draft that we're beginning to work off of that will be sharing in the future. Consistent with the city's design standards, adhere to developments, design guidelines if applicable, promote economic development, contribute positively to the built environment, align with zoning and land use regulations, balance aesthetic consistency, and ensure regulatory compliance and functionality. Applicability, so that's kind of the, that next section of the proposed code update will be applicability. Who can actually have these? Where are they felt, where do we feel they are appropriate? Staff has wrestled with this item substantially. As of right now, this is what we have, single or multi lot development or redevelopments. And that's, we're actually going to change that to subject property to make it a little easier, a little clearer because it's defined differently. That is a minimum of one acre and located in one of the following zoning districts. So that'd be corridor mixed, so C M, business center B C, and then industrial park I P. We had a lot of conversation about the one acre, and that's something that we might look to bump up a little bit. But just so you know, some of the rationale behind that is we do have a number of locations in the city that are multi parcel and multi tenant that are not really all that large. And the intent here is that, you know, not only is this kind of envisioned for those new larger developments because we have a, a number of those kind of on our doorstep, but also if somebody wants to do a signage refresh. So existing shopping center, existing industrial park that wants to do something else with signage. The intent would be that they would be allowed to apply for this. And we are pretty particular about the zoning districts. We do not propose to have N C in there. That's a little bit more of a neighborhood feel as being neighborhood commercial. So we kind of envisioned sticking with the current sign ordinance there instead of allowing for this flexibility to be larger. And the same is true of downtown. Downtown has a much more robust signage plan already, our signage code already. We're not really looking to have downtown be allowed to utilize this. Oftentimes downtown is much more pedestrian focused, so the signage is better served either on the building, not necessarily in the case of like monument signs or other freestanding signs, which a lot of this encompasses. And then proposed to require at time of, of M D P. So if you're doing an M D P, potentially requiring it. But once again, also allowing this for existing developments that desire a, you know, a new sign package. This is just kind of a, an example of a, a number of different ways that you can look at freestanding signs and how they could be calculated. So the concept that, that we've been working on is envisions a little bit more of frontage width. So for instance, the image on the left really takes into account the frontage of these buildings. And, and we can talk a little bit about that central red line. That's a private drive rather than a public. So that probably would not, under our current draft, be something that would be counted. However, you can still kind, it still represents, you know, pretty well the exterior dimension. So if that shopping center decided to move forward with the master sign plan, then they would, we would calculate the frontage in, in one scenario. Calculate the frontage and how, allow a number of freestanding signs based on that frontage. The one next to it is a little bit more along the lines of access points and how many access points you have in conjunction with the signage, right? So what we are focusing on more is the linear footage and create, generating a number of signs based off of layer footage. Attached signs, so a number of sign types. So currently we've been working on with the concept of the potential for any tenant space to be allowed, you know, three types of signs. So those types of attached signs would be arcade, awning, marquee, projecting, wall, window. So you get to kind of pick from a slate of options. And then when it comes to wall sign, right now, our code, you know, we've heard from, from the business community that oftentimes our code is a little hard to interpret, hard to navigate. We're trying to simplify things. And what we're proposing here would be a change from a calculation based off of linear footage of the frontage of a tenant space or a building to a maximum percentage. So as of right now, we're, we're looking at something to, in the range of twelve to fifteen percent of this building facade. And when we come back to talk about that at, at time of request recommendation, we'll have some more images that would indicate kind of the approximation there. These are just images that we've.
Ten percent, twelve percent, fifteen percent? Are these examples of that percent?
These are examples of two that comply with the twelve. So I believe the Dave's Hot Chicken example was close to twelve percent. I believe the Chipotle is well below that.
Twelve percent of the entire square foot frontage, yes.
And not worrying about windows, et cetera, just the box, right? Yeah, exactly. Then freestanding signage, as I mentioned earlier, talking about that five hundred linear feet. In conjunction with that, staff has been discussing ways of incentivizing fewer signs. And yet we feel that for larger commercial and industrial, predominantly commercial developments, especially on, you know, state highways, et cetera, it's not uncommon to see a, a pretty good sized monument sign, right? That would have a number of the different tenants or a number of the different users within the site on those signs. So we're, we're working on a scenario where if you, let's just say that you end up counting the linear footage, dividing it by five hundred, and in this case it gets to you, I think about fourteen signs. If you removed one of those signs, then a different sign would potentially be allowed a larger size parameter. So it's kind of trying to incentivize remove fewer signs, but allowing for them to be larger and get more sign space on them. Yes, fourteen and remove one, largely by discuss. And then our code also doesn't, doesn't do a great job of talking about wayfinding signs and drive through signs. So these are things that we often see, you know, turn here to head towards a drive through, turn here for X. You know, a lot of developers and users really like to have some of those small way defining signs to get you to the location. So we're proposing to have them exempt with maximum cap sizes. So a wayfinding sign with a no larger than X, a drive through sign, no larger than Y. And then in the other category, signs that does not require additional review of sign allowed without permits. So basically not conflicting with our current signs allowed without a permit and prohibited signs that are in chapter ten, one, three. Proposed review, this is just kind of the application review process. A lot of this is administrative when being the code, a couple of the things need, need to be there. But basically application submitted, you know, completeness review by staff. We always say director, but we mean, you know, planning staff. If it's complete, moves on to referral, so gets referred out to the different entities. If it, if it's reviewed once and it's found to be in compliance, then, you know, we move forward with a decision. So that decision, if it's not, then it goes back through a recent middle process. If it is approved, yeah, there would be a, a peel period and then a completion of building permit. So it's our, our proposed process there. Next steps, we plan on touching this very briefly at the March eleventh joint city council planning commission meeting, along with a lot of other topics. Getting draft text amendment language out, re-engaging with the stakeholders based on that draft text amendment language. Then moving towards the planning commission meeting for recommendation of the proposed amendment. And then first and second reading of an ordinance adopt, with adoption by city council. And with that, I'd ask if there are any questions or discussion items.
One, one technical question I have is who was in the stakeholder group that you talked to?
Yeah, a number of current developers and real estate individuals. I mean, we have a, we have a couple of sites that are currently under review. So for instance, the, one of the ones that I indicated here, the Southwest corner of Mineral in Santa Fe, we spoke with that developer. Amongst others.
And then the other technical question I had was, you said that we're talking about a one acre as the master site plan sort of trigger. One acre larger would be able to use a, a master site plan. Does seem small, Westminster uses three acres. I wondered what, you mentioned that there were some multi tenant, multi parcel things under an acre?
Not under an acre, but close to an acre. Yeah. So for instance, the example that I can throw out right now is across the street where the Panda Express, et cetera, all of those. If that group got together and said, hey, let's put up a, you know, a different sign, maybe we want a little larger, et cetera. That's a little over an acre and a half.
But it's one parcel owned by the, it's, it's a, like a little shopping mall. They, those stores all lease, none of, they're not individually owned. So that would be a single owner. That's not a multi parcel, one acre site.
Yeah, and.
When you're trying to coordinate between different parcels, that's, okay, I'm trying to think of where that could happen.
Yeah, so, so we didn't necessarily want to limit it to a single, I mean, but we can go either way. But we didn't necessarily want limited to a single owner. There's still a number of tenants in that space if the owner wanted to go larger. That's not to say that that's, you know, the perfect example either. More than happy to look at a, a larger size as well. But that was our, some of our rationale for why we were looking at a kind of that smaller size.
I kind of wonder, just given like some of the things you see alongside Littleton Boulevard, are they actually an acre like on where the Taco House is and kind of behind in there? I don't know, is that, it probably is?
There might be some bigger than an acre, but there, it's still a single parcel. I don't think, I think the owner of the parcel could come in and ask for signage, just like at the, where the Panda Express is. I, I'm trying to think of where we would see multiple owners coming forward, wanting to do a master sign plan across several parcels that added up to two acres or something.
Yeah, not unless you're like completely redeveloping something, which would be.
I just wanted to see if there was anything specific that you were thinking, and that the Panda Express is what you're thinking about.
Yeah, that, that was the rationale for the one acre. The other item that I'd like us, I'd like to kind of put into your, into the conversation for consideration is we were a little hesitant on making it multi parcel or multi parcel ownership because for instance, we also don't do a great, the code doesn't do a great job of a campus environment. So we really only have one good sized campus environment here. I was thinking of the hospital, you know, the hospital came in for new signage, which they, they've recently rebranded and, and we've worked with them. And we've been able to, to issue them sign permits. But if they wanted to do kind of a, a new comprehensive, you know, re-signage package of that entire campus, our code is, is pretty challenged on it. They're actually under a P D that allows them to do a couple of different things that our code would, would allow for. And it's challenging to interpret. So that was the other rationale behind a single ownership, right? I mean, there's a lot of.
I think it's simplified, I mean, if it's a single owner, it's pretty straightforward. They're going to come through with their plan and it'll apply to everything within their campus or within their, South Park is a good example of the multiple owners. Imagine the amount of linear feet measurement there, how many signs we could get under this proposal. It, I shudder to think what Pat Denhee would come up with for that.
We actually reached out to South Park as well as stakeholders.
Well, can I open up with sort of my big picture feelings about this? And first of all, thank you for the presentation and thank you for the, looking at this. I think it's a pretty important question. My, my first gut is that signs are changing. Signs are becoming used in a different way in some ways. People don't use signs to find places as much as they used to. They use Google. And we don't rely so much on identifying some location. They say, oh, there it is, there's the sign telling me where to go. We pretty much know where we're going. Signs are now used more in a billboard fashion to advertise. And it's a, that's their role. It's one of the reasons banks want corner locations. They want their signage where people see it. So twenty, thirty, forty years ago, pre-internet, pre-Google, pre-mapping, signs played a more important role in finding places than they do now. I think they're, my personal take is they're more billboardy. And that informs my hesitation to allow really big signs. I, I was reading our complants, basic community goals about being anchored, authentic, active, engaged, and connected. And the authentic and active part of our goals is a community to really be an authentic place, both in terms of national beauty and the quality of the spaces. I find some of the idea of, of big signage, when you think about like Santa Fe scaled signs, like we're seeing at A C C, and I think there's a new one down by Breckenridge. These are really car based infrastructure things. They're for the people passing through, they're not really community oriented. It just makes, I just feel like we should be fairly restrictive about both our size and like what kind of brightness and lighting and stuff. I think I look at the corridors of, if I think of Sheridan, Wadsworth, some of the bigger places where you see a lot of signage, lit signage. I think of them as, of a very different character than I'd like Littleton to be. Like they don't sing to me as places. They don't seem as authentically Littleton. And if we wanted to carve out of the, an identity, I love our downtown. And I love, it's interesting that the downtown signage restrictions are so measured, you know, they can't be over thirty two square feet, period, end of story. Four by eight, that's the max in downtown. I mean, well, no, you can actually get them bigger than that, but you have to have a much bigger facade to do that. But that's kind of the cap, a, a standard cap you see. And they, the quality of that informs the kind of place that you create. So I understand the need for larger signs, but I saw that drawing of fourteen signs around the perimeter. And I thought, do those serve the people living here or are those just for advertising as people go flying by on the bigger roads around there?
I think that particular example was not a great example to, to show in the first place. You know, it's the old strip mall type of situation where you have parking out in the front and you, it's just not what we want to see, I think, with our typical land use proposals. But I, I would like to take one step back and just kind of question why, you know, other than the fact that we have reserved in the U L U C and it was anticipated that something was going to be filled in there for signs. But we have a really robust sign section. What would happen if we didn't do this, we just referred all that back to the signage section? Would we get unanticipated results or are the stakeholders that you talked to concerned about not being able to do what they think they should be able to do?
They, they are concerned about, if we were to stick with our current sign document, I feel that we would still need some form of text amendment to it because as of right now, some of the stakeholders have indicated that they have parcels that are set back further. That our code indicates you can have a joint sign now. However, that joint sign is only for that parcel, is not for the, a multi parcel development. So a person in the back would not be able to place their signage on the sign along the highway. So that's one of the biggest issues that we've, we have. Well, Santa Fe is one of the prime examples. Yeah, so, so that would be one of the items that we've heard. We also, our code right now allows for pole, pylon, and monument. And it doesn't indicate one of those, it indicates any. So this would be working towards comp plan efforts of minimizing the number of signs there. So that's the other rationale for why we are really trying to focus. So that's the other rationale for why we are really trying to focus. Monument, pole, pylon, and monument.
And right under this, you would be able to choose from three out of seven, you could in theory choose pole, po- pylon, and monument. Of the three, you're allowed, right?
No, that was on, uh. Those attached signs, yeah, so on, on freestanding, uh, we would, we would propose. You know, and this is something, this is why we're having the discussion too, so you're more than happy to get the feedback. Um, but we were intending to propose working on monument signs. Um, I am not a very large advocate of pole signs in general, that's just me. Um, I think that you can do, um, pretty nice signage with a monument sign.
I suppose just taking something clear up in the air.
I lived in a community where that one of the longest multi-decade battles is over the height of this ginormous fifty-seven foot high tower sign. That people could see from neighborhoods, you know, away, because when you wanted to reach the highway nearby, you're way up there. Imagine, you know, the overpass at Bellevue, in order to catch those cars coming over, you're gonna want your quick trip sign or whatever, way up. But you're, all, everybody else in the viewscape is gonna see it. Height, I was gonna add that, I think that reducing, let's say your maximum number of signs was fourteen, going down to eleven, so you could get taller signs. I'm not a big fan of that approach, I think we should have a height limit. It should be applied, whether you have a few signs, that we shouldn't give bonus heights for restricting signs, I think, I think we want to keep the heights down.
Well, that's just me. And I, um, I would not advocate for no maximum height, right? I'm, I'm completely with you there, is that our proposal would be that you would be able to go from, say fifteen to twenty-five feet. Rather than infinity, so we would not, not, we definitely want a maximum cap, for sure.
Sure, okay, but, but when you, there was, there, I don't know if I misunderstood the slide, it seemed to be that if you did a reduced number of signs. You would gain additional height. Yeah, I, I would rather us just have a sort of height limit and people can put as many signs. I'd rather a lot more shorter signs, let's say, and then fewer signs, but then two of them are giant, giant, really tall. But that's, you know, that's my personal perspective.
Yeah, I think you're almost incentivizing people to build big signs, cause if I can take two down out of the back somewhere. And there's something gigantic out front, that's, that's probably gonna be problematic. I, I, I don't know if this is a, I don't know if it's a good idea personally, to, to, to reduce the number in order to get bigger. I guess I understand it from just a pure math point of view, because it's like I get the same number, same amount of square footage of sign or whatever, but.
This isn't a math question, this is really an aesthetic.
Yeah, but they, if there is something like that, there definitely needs to be a maximum. I don't know, it just doesn't seem like something that. Is particularly needed at this point, I don't know, the, the big tall, to, to get taller and bigger.
Well, let's talk about, didn't we recently, didn't you recently approve permit a thirty-foot high lighted sign for Breckenridge?
That was a variance request, that was approved.
Varyance, okay, so what is the height limit that they were bucked up against?
Fifteen feet. So here's the, the challenge with that one is they are not directly next to the, the road, right? There's a detention swale, and then it does drop down about fifteen feet. So that was the rationale for the variance.
Compensating for the slope decline to get back up to.
And if, if people wanna go for a variance, that's fine, come on and, come on and ask for variance and see, and see what.
Might be worth it, um, but we currently limit heights to fifteen.
Uh, that's for pole, they vary, I believe monument is. Actually, I think pylon is higher. And then, double check here, it also is a little challenging because it's by zone district as well. So we've got standards kind of here, there, and everywhere. Yeah, in CM for instance. Have monument sign, um, in CM is fifteen feet tall. Um, pole is either fifteen or lesser than the height of the, uh, building that it's adjacent to. On the side, which is not a very good tall pole sign. Well, no, 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 it, the height of the building or fifteen feet, whichever is less. Yeah, so if you only have a twelve foot tall or ten foot tall, you know, gas station or something, and you want pole sign, it's gotta be pretty short. Um, and then it's pylon is the lesser in the height of the point of the building or twenty-five feet.
That would be like a gas station signs, we see some pylons. I see twenty-five footers around here, I figured those must be pylons by that definition, if we kept the others at fifteen. I struggle with this a lot, because I think that. There's a lot of pressure to make drive-by bright billboardy signs, you know, whether they're monumental pylons or whatever. And. I wonder how to square that with keeping this city from looking like every other avenue. Of commercial, you know, Bellevue type stuff, and I don't know if there's a way to reconcile that. But it's interesting that our downtown is so careful about their signage limits and constraints. And why it's such a great experience to be there. And how to adapt more of that approach to say, you know, if you wanna find something, you, you need to look it up. But we're not here to become, you know, Citgo or some bank of New York's billboard system. As a ci- as a community, um, I understand the imperatives of corporate or, you know, formula retail chains desire for that. But we have so much unincorporated land, we have so many roadways that are already strewn with this stuff. Is it really a wonderful thing that Littleton matches the code that these other communities use? I, I hate to sound super restrictive, but I, I don't know what the impact of saying no to some of this stuff would be commercially. Financially, fiscally to business owners, but I'm grappling with that question a lot. And as we go forward on the Littleton Boulevard, Subarea Plan, and other considerations about our corridors, you know, what do we want these to look like? When we set twenty-five foot pylon privileges, so to speak, in our sign code. We're gonna get twenty-five foot lighted signs at, in the most visible places on smaller parcels. Is that what we want? Is that the kind of city we're designing or planning for? These are the questions I'm grappling with.
I, I hear you, and I, I think those are important questions, and I think what you're talking about is very aspirational. You know, what do we want our city to look like?
Do we kill our commercial?
Feeling is that the sign code, it has to follow the land use, right? And the context of each area, and right now it's locked in, it sounds like to land uses. And maybe it's more corridors, corridor based, um, because, you know, somebody driving at fifty-five miles an hour along Santa Fe. You know, and the sign is this big, it, it's posing a safety problem.
Our sign, our, our, our district, CM, CM, which is where this will apply, is really on all four of our, Mineral. It's on Santa Fe, it's on Littleton Boulevard, it's on Broadway, all of our corridors will be, are almost, except for Littleton Boulevard, which still has largely NC. But what we're seeing is that people are applying, like, you know, SMHO is applying to, to rezon one of the NCs to CMU. Because they want the more, less restrictive building permits there, and those are kind of, um, you know, we'll see that. We'll see people going, well, can we just rezon this to CM, and then they'll be under this signage regime? Uh, but I, I generally worry about all of our corridors, uh, because they're almost all edged with CM.
So maybe it has to go beyond the, the corridor and to the speed limit or something.
Yeah, maybe size of the road.
Because obviously downtown's designed for pedestrians and bikes, and so your scale of signage is gonna be completely different, that's why it really works there. Um, but Santa Fe or Mineral, or, you know, some of the other roads that are higher speed. I could see the need for, uh, identity, and, and, you know, I, I know that the sign styles and types and needs are changing. But I, I also have worked on enough projects with developers that the branding aspect of that. And the wayfinding, um, the wayfinding part of it's probably evolved the most, because that's where you're using Google Maps or whatever. But the branding aspect of it, the, you know, hey, that's where the store is that I need to visit. Is, is still very important.
Yeah, in, in the, you know, community I first started working in, um, they only allowed for monument signs. They were, I think six or eight feet tall was the maximum. But you were allowed as a kind of a shopping center to come in and request signs predominantly at corners or entrances. That were substantially tar that had more, um, tenants on them than just your, your singular outlaw sign. And to be honest, I felt that that was, you know, was a pretty good, uh, system that we had. And, and we didn't have pole or pylon, um, allowed at all.
It's not allowed in, uh, you go to some places, Santa Barbara, you can't put them in. I mean, it's like, I think about Vale, you know, there's a very fast road along, right through the edge of Vale. And I don't recall ever seeing any signage on that, I mean, there, there are, my thought experiment is I go to, I, in my mind, I go to communities where they have, kept the signage down to a kind of quietude, and they're not poor communities, they're often wealthy communities, they, the wealthiest. I didn't look at Cherry Hill's signage limits, but I have a feeling these are way beyond what you can do. And some of the ar- areas around here, and they're not commercially unviable or dying. So I wonder, are we really, do we need to do this?
I do wonder if Craig is sort of on some, maybe we do it by corridor somehow, I don't know, that, that's gonna be a difficult thing to police do probably. And it's probably, it might get even more confusing for people, which is not the goal of things like this, right? But it is also, it could also be the, the better of the options as far as like, if I'm driving down Littleton Boulevard, it's a different thing than I'm driving down Santa Fe, or, those are, they're very different. And if you've got CM on both, they're both gonna be allowed the same thing, and that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. I suppose, I don't know, this is a.
I, I think to your, because we, we struggled with this a little bit too, for instance, um. You know, we have a couple of developments that are on federal that are CM, right? It's like, uh, that's a much more kind of a residential in that area.
Yeah, you're transitioning fairly quickly into residential.
Yeah, so, you know, is it, is it as applicable there as it would be on Santa Fe and Broadway? You know, and so we, we kind of kick those around, and we're happy to hear the, the feedbacks. It's actually just.
But you have, you have the old, um, shopping mall that faces federal, that, that's a CM parcel, and the backside is Irving. And when you get a master sign plan, we're talking about allowing signs in the master site plan that conform to the limits of the sign. Sign ordinance, and that's Irving Street could have one of these kind of lighted signs. I think there's always the backsides of these things that. It becomes an interesting challenge, I, I wonder if we didn't allow pylons at all. What, what do we feel like in this community, could, could we be a different kind of?
Streets at South Glen has a, a nice signage package, I worked on a project many years ago, Streets at South Glen. And they really were trying to integrate the signage into the architecture, even, even the perimeter signage is on the walls. You know, they're not so much freestanding, I know that, uh, University in Rapaoh, there is one multi-tenant sign there. But most of it is integrated in well, and it was designed with the architecture, uh, which we don't fully have the luxury of.
If we just had a design review board to review every single project, we could get, we could get to this level of granularity of good signage. But we're not trying to talk, get a generic document, it's gonna cover very small parcels in some ways. If they're one acre.
Not necessarily, like I said, we kind of struggle with the size, I still think one acre is too small personally. I'm still trying to right-size that.
Yeah, I mean, for a master sign plan, it just seems pretty like a very smallish par- parcel. But you could, what, what we're gonna be allowing here is that set-back parcel owner getting together with the one that's on the frontage where they wanna get their sign. And the two other things, and they're gonna come forward to the city saying, hey, now, right now, you're right, the, the, if you, if you're a commercial operation on the back parcel. You don't get any permit to put your sign on the main corridor. Again, I don't think that's about finding the, the business, that's about advertising the business on the corridor. Um, and so it's really about wanting to get their sign out front where people see it. And my question is always like, well, maybe you shouldn't have bought the back parcel if you wanted to be a roadway-facing commercial operation. But, so we're gonna allow them to kind of get together with other parcel owners and move their signs along the corridor. Based on the total area of the multi-parcel thing. So even if we did the raise to three, I think we're gonna find that we'll, we'll have some backside parcels adding to front. Because we've opened up this possibility of a master plan for a whole group of parcels. That even if it's three acres, they'll qualify, and then the question then gets back, how big should these signs be? How much presence do we exceed, what, what is the balance of, of like satisfying the stakeholders, these developers? And satisfy, and creating another, or staying with a, a more authentic, small-scale field. That you see in other communities that don't allow a lot of large lighted signs.
Yeah, we've seen some other examples of places that have, uh, still allowed for joint signs. But them being, you know, pretty modestly sized and a lot more emphasis being placed on wall signs too. So I think there's some examples of that as well.
I thought it was very interesting, I sent everybody that Denver thing, you know, that, that, that sort of cheesy crappy signs that we're, like you see on Littleton Boulevard. All the shopping places, those are all disallowed in the Denver ordinance.
That's, I did look at that closer, it is all for downtown zone.
Just for the downtown, yeah. Power to them for getting even that, Denver's downtown is no small area.
No, but. I mean, it, it indicated it extended to, you know, that zoning, because there were a number of zoning districts on there, they extended to Cherry Creek, et cetera, so.
Well, North Cherry Creek, it looked like, that whole area has its own regime, you have to pass a review board and everything else, that, that was even more restrictive. But yeah, that's like.
That's a business district thing probably.
They got some very special protections on there, uh, everything there, sidewalk, infrastructure, signage. You gotta get approved by the, it's like having an HRB or something, you know, it's, but for modern architecture. Um, but I thought that was not a bad thing to prescribe, to not permit some, some of these bad-looking signs. I mean, the, the monument signs that have things embedded, it's, it's, it's a very classy kind of look. And we do, we do have unpermitted sto- types of signs. But I would be very amenable to really clamping down on some of the junky-looking ones. That we are still in our permitted thing, since this is a study session, I get to free-range concepts here. But yeah, I don't know if this, again, you have to go to the stakeholders, and I'm sure they'll tell you, we'll be out of business if we can't put thirty-two five-square-foot lighted sign. With white background on the street. I also will say that I, I worry about the, using the, the square footage of the facade to dictate. This minimum sign, the maximum sign area, um, I'm a little more comfortable with a maximum sign area. That Chapote layer, whatever it is, and nothing be- because you could build your first, you know, you can get those fake fronts and add to the signs. Just to get a scaled-up sign, I mean, and that's what the old, you go to old pictures of downtown Littleton, they would make these extra walls. And they paint the whole thing with their, you know, appliance store logo, and that's the old world way, and that, it was very permissive. And in general, I'm, I'm all for that, but today's technology allows you to have a much brighter, much more demanding and insistent kind of signage. And when you can scale it to the facade size, it's just, it encourages you to have a lot of false fronts and bigger facades. And I, I, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna encourage that. My sense is the best communities are not the ones that look like a series of billboards. And the le- the more we get away from looking like a, even on, even on the corridors, even on the high-speed corridors, whatever we call that. I think they become the generic American landscape, if you go down some of these roads. You cannot tell where you are, whether you're somewhere up I twenty-five or here.
I would, I would argue we might already be there.
Yes, yes.
Particularly also, I, I mean, because we're, if you drive, being that I was on transportation stuff before this. It's like nobody cares if they're in Littleton or Inglewood or Centennial, and when they're driving up. And when they're driving up Broadway, they're on Broadway, right? They can, they can kind of tell when when they switch cities.
We care, but I mean, we have a very compact little forty-five thousand person city, and it's trying to establish a place. And our comp plan talks a lot about curating and 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 being good stewards of this particular place. And how do we get to a particular place-ness? We don't do it by looking like all these other roadways. I mean, and having the same, not to say that you're copying paste, but taking what is basically a code package for signage that everybody else is using or very similar to these other, and plopping it into our code. And we've done that way too much, like drive-throughs, all of it, it's just parking minimums. We've we've taken a code base that's basically, I think, copied and pasted from a lot of places. And was not tailored to the interests of this community in a lot of ways, it just was adopted with. So, and I worry about that in the signage ordinance, I think. I'm not, I'm I'm all for master plan signing, signage. I think that's actually gonna make your life easier and make businesses coming in on larger parcels have a better process to developing a signage plan. That's all good. It's really a question of what are we permitting within that?
More than happy up the conversation about what we're permitting. And I do think that this process, if adopted, would give more more possibility to have a unified signage for an area, you know, similar architecture, et cetera. Instead of every brand having a very different sign. Yeah, and that's kind of the, that was part of the intent of of the proposal is to attempt to make uh the shopping centers somewhat uniformly came to architecture.
Would be the process for somebody who came back and wanted to initiate a, they have an existing development. So obviously, if a new development, it would go through the MDP process, and we would have an opportunity to review it. Would there be a planning commission review of master sign plan that if you came back?
Not under what we're proposing.
Do you wanna give us more power, Craig?
Do you want more sessions to review? I mean, the community development director is, you know, basically gonna make sure it conforms to whatever limits we put in the sign plan. And if it match, if it succeeds to meet the guidelines, then it just moves forward.
Most successful master sign plans I've seen are coordinated with the architecture of the design, the design of the whole place. If you're coming back later and you have sort of a mishmash of different buildings, it's like, how do you determine whether that's complementary of your architecture?
I would think this would happen mainly like if someone is like refacing their entire, like if Woodlawn wanted to reface everything and and sort of upgrade or whatever. And they would come in and wanna refresh that, that that would probably be where it would would come in the most. That's, that's my impression.
It's gonna happen, though. I think we're gonna see very few of these, like, I'm redoing the signage on this old plaza. I think we're mostly gonna be looking at new. Almost none of it will go, go, I I, signs are expensive, they're an ex, fairly expensive investment and uh people. I'd be surprised if even one monument sign was added to there, redeveloped it. They're gonna do it when they sell it, the new buyer's gonna come in and when there's redevelopment in that parcel, but.
Potentially, yeah, there's, there's a number of other examples on Broadway of of other shopping centers that have joint signs that, signs are expensive. They may never choose to change them, you know, besides just changing a face out. But it would give them the opportunity to do so.
So I have a question for you, Jared. You talked about the hospital, Littleton Adventist, very large amount of actual, you know, frontage and building faces. Now, they came in with a new signage plan, and and from the slide you showed, I mean, maybe you can roll back to this. The one with the stars around it, and every five hundred linear feet, you could put a thing. So something like the hospital, I assume they did their campus signs sort of around the whole facility, wayfinding stuff. It's not, they weren't really looking to put a series of Littleton Adventist signs every five hundred feet, because they have a fairly large frontage. If you consider all of this, it's like multiple blocks, it's a quarter mile. So, so could, in this plan, instead of A four, five, six, seven, eight, all those, could they have been moved down to a one frontage? Are they allowed, would they be allowed, there are fourteen signs, could they put ten of them on Littleton Bou, on the Broadway side and four?
Minimum spacing as well, I think that would be a.
Is that in your design? No, it's just, they are allowed fourteen because they had this much total square footage.
Uh, yeah, linear footage of a public roadway. Yeah, and this example.
I think we're gonna need a spacer limit.
They look like, you know, political season where you got fifteen vote for so-and-so's in a row.
Not that people would probably do that, but you can imagine the abuse that's possible of that, right? And and you, the director would have a, this meets our code, we have to approve ten signs in this quarter mile. And even though there's only two on the backside, we need some mechanism to, I'm not sure what this kind of signage is. I mean, if if they're allowed pylons, can they do four pylons in a row?
Right now, see all those buildings, each one of them can have a pylon.
So we don't restrict.
Have a pole, each one of them can have a monument.
I think it's really, it's not, it doesn't feel good. I don't feel like it's authentic and connected or anything.
By the time, I would redo the entire sign ordinance, just my own personal.
They can still do a lot of these things under the current one, it's just a lot of pushing.
Uh, what we're proposing is to try to work towards minimizing that, right? Because as of right now, it's like, how many buildings I have? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and beyond. You're already looking at beyond that.
And they can do one per building?
As of right now, because each, almost each one of those is a different parcel. So, yeah.
They're allowed one marquee on each building and then possibly a pylon. And if they want it, okay, yeah, it's a lot of signage allowed.
So we're actually looking at, this sounds like a lot, right? And I wanted to show you the most drastic example. So I get it, the example is cluttered and it's probably not great, but it's probably one of the most drastic ones that we have, right? Couple of the other ones do not have this much public right of way. This one, a lot of these interior roads probably would have been private drives had it hadn't been for, you know, some other public.
This is actually Mineral.
Mineral Santa Fe.
Yeah, there it is, it's coming into, wow, they're proposing all this pad retail now along, what happened to all the multi-unit apartment buildings there?
Uh, there's a, there's some of that there as well.
Very little compared to what I remember in the approval. Dang. This is gonna look just like all the other major roadways around the Denver Metro, just drive-ins, drive-throughs and big signs. This was not considered a major plan amendment.
Uh, they have uh an MDP that talks about a lot of these items.
I remember seeing parcels, quadrant three and four very differently. To go back and look at that. Well, okay. The red stars in this drawing are what?
Uh, yeah, this is just representative of what they.
This could be a sign, this could be, okay, A fifteen could be a. Well, guys, I don't know, Tim, you gotta weigh in.
Uh, well, in this case, you know, each of those buildings functions as a separate business, they're totally different patient services. But, um, but I I think I definitely agree with the sentiment that you stated well, that, you know, the large signage detracts from community and neighborhood feel. It discourages other development that might contribute to a neighborhood feel. If there's a large sign, you're only gonna encourage other businesses that want other large signs. Uh, and, you know, the, the Main Street or downtown Main District, you know, we, we're saying we're liking what they're doing. But then, kind of brought up the downtown mixed-use zone of the, like the Panda Express area. And, yeah, to me, that feels unfortunate for being kind of a forward-facing zone of, you know, Littleton's identity and saying, you know, we're, we're a drive-by retail strip mall type of community. And a, and a somewhat, you know, some of the values of neighborhoods and community. So I just feel like, uh, yeah, I'm on board with Tim's more conservative approach to size. I think your point on, you know, being wary of percentages of building to sign, I think is is a good concern. I think, yeah, a max size, and maybe it's a max size, not per street frontage, but per like count of street frontage. If you're a corner building, you get, you can face two streets to get that, you know.
Well, they're calculating by linear feet, so it's linear, this side and this side, but it should only be linear feet on the frontages.
Well, it could be a max size period, but you get it per street face.
I mean, I I agree with Tim a lot about that, like when you have a lot of big, bright signs and and marquees that say enormous lighted things, and everything's a drive-through around it and massive parking spaces, it signals, you're really not supposed to walk between these things. Or this is not a place for people to stroll or be, it's really for people to pull in driving. And is, I just don't love it. I mean, I just don't love that approach. I think that if the signs are smaller, um, they're friendlier to people who are, they're scaled to the human being in the in the space, not the vehicles traveling by. And that's what we should be strive, I would like to see us strive for that approach, that that that, if you're gonna come and put a business in Littleton, it's, uh, and I think the signs are, I'm not talking about signs so small that you can't see them from a car, but just not so massive, you know, like, that they're not built for the vehicular passing by, but they're built for kind of conveying what the business is, like the Chipotle sign. I thought that was a fine, it's big, I mean, it's twelve percent of the overall facade, it's about as big as you want, but it, even that signals billboard to me. The less we do that, the better. At the Denver ordinance, I thought was interesting, because it's like, signs have to be dark with letters, not white signs with yellow letters. It has to be a dark, they recommend, they didn't insist, but they said, this community prefers dark signs with the elements of the name lit. Maybe it says, you know, cat club in red or something, but the signs are recommended to be on the dark, at the base level. That was an interesting thing to see in a sign code, I had never run across that. I don't know how restrictive we wanna get, but I.
I would develop similar to that, where the per perimeter of the sign had to be dark, and then the lettering was what was able to be.
As the basic form of them. That challenges a lot of, I can hear some of the stakeholders screaming and yelling, because there are corporate sign designs that, we don't have a a dark background. We always use yellow with, you know, purple letters or whatever. Anyway, Littleton is messing us up. But on the other hand, maybe Littleton should be messing some of these things up. I mean, are we here to serve national chains and their signage standards? Is that what we're here for? We're not here for that, I don't know. That's, I certainly don't feel we should be here for that. I don't feel our comp plan calls on us to serve that particular God. So I think it does say we could be restrictive and conservative in size and brightness and et cetera, and be meaningfully aligned with our comprehensive plan, with the envisioned plan descriptions of the place we live in. No, it's not as permissive as Wattsworth or or sections of Broadway where it's just a free-for-all. But maybe that's, that's, that would, I would be in favor of that being our sort of understood quality, that you're gonna have to rein in some of this big, bright, pylon sign stuff that you see along mo, most of these commercial axes when you're in Littleton. I mean, we want people to, I actually think, when you hit downtown Littleton, you know you're in Littleton. And it's because of things like the lack of, those signs are really small in downtown Littleton, and yet, I think people know it's there. I think they, it's a thriving little, you know.
I I know it's there because I'm splitting two one-way streets, but that's. You know what I'm saying? Because you you come over the bridge and it's like.
Different kind of roadway.
It is, it's just a different kind of road, it's a different kind of design, designed roadway, so.
It's not like, uh, the Denver Brewing Company is like doing terrible because they don't have a twenty-five-foot white pylon there. I mean, it's, it's, when you scale it right, I mean, we want, I wanna encourage that kind of development and that kind of business. And I, I don't wanna encourage just drive-through, drive-by businesses that have giant corporate lighted signs. I think that's not what our envisioned Littleton called for Littleton to be. And I think we should do as much as we can to steer away from that. Uh, so that maybe one day when you do enter Littleton, you realize, oh, weird, all the signs here are a lot darker and smaller. Maybe we don't allow any, only, everything's on monuments, you know, it's like, Fort Collins does that for sections, I see it. You see some communities where they're very tight on signage. There's a, there's a, I remember reading years ago, McDonald's had to go through massive contortions to get into this little town in Maine, which had really restrictive style and and frontage designs. Nothing in in the corporate manual of McDonald's could figure out how to get onto their their street. But they ended up twisting their way into the right kind of brick and little tiny sign, uh, to get into my old neighbor in the Castro. Starbucks bought one of the local cafes, but the neighborhood doesn't allow the typical Starbucks, big, bright sign on. They have a lot of signage of Starbucks, so they want you to see it when you go by. They, all they could do is a little tiny circle of green in front of the store, and you know, it did fine. I mean, people find Starbucks from the app and everything else. It wasn't a killer for the business, it was difficult for their corporate bosses to accept the limits of that. But maybe we can do that, I don't know. This is a question the stakeholders will probably scream and yell about.
That's, that's probably a complete overhaul of sign code, though, which is what you were, you were alluding to earlier. That's a, that's a, that's a tie, that that becomes a tie issue, it sounds like, right?
So they're not even close to that.
They they would have to be directed to do it, basically, from from my estimation of how how you've put this so far.
I hate to put it that way, we just have a number of.
There's other priorities, yes, yeah.
The stakeholders made that argument of it drives ten percent of our business for our consideration and urban councils.
I don't know about the percentage of business, et cetera. You know, there are some, you know, users that are, you know, want to take advantage of of other items on the site rather than the roadway, right? They still want to have some visibility along the roadway. So there's, um, you know, some really nice uh frontage along uh the the parkland to the west. And so there's other rationale for why you would want to be on the other side of that site.
This is actually on some of the parkland, right? This is gonna be face-open space on the backside of, and so I, I hope we don't get a lot of crazy signs on that side.
I mean, I think that's, I think that's the reverse, is that because they are on the backside, they wanna be cognizant of that. But they would rather have their advertising out where the traffic is.
I think what appeared in all these looks is that we should be more restrictive, that we should narrow down the choices that are available. Maybe focus on monument is the preferred type of signage.
And be very thoughtful about the marquee signage that we do allow, in terms of the overall size of those things. I I personally think it would look better if every single one of these kind of pad retail actually just had a, they went to our maximum and just had a uniform set of sizes for it, than than if, that each one was getting bigger or smaller based on the building, you know? Because we're, right now, we're talking about a percentage of the facade size, so like, the bigger one have a big sign, and there's a little sign, and a big sign. I just, if I was the developer of this mall, I would want all of my signs to have a kind of natural conformance. But maybe we, I think there's nothing wrong with us imposing that within it, within, by our maximum size.
I think that's something that we would definitely want inside of an MPT, you want everything to look alike, alike inside of that particular.
Continuity, that the continent, signage is continuity, and maybe one way to achieve that is to keep it not scaling to the facade, which is just gonna get a lot of, I think there's a temptation in businesses to 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 often do too much of big signs. I mean, to treat it like it's Vegas. And there's, there's, we don't know. And there's, there's, we don't know, I don't even think they know necessarily how much value, like, they don't know if ten percent of their business is 'cause they had a huge lighted sign on the road. There's just a lot of vibes, kind of like impressions. You don't really have any clear data that a big sign does you better business. So I don't know. I mean, I know they'll want it, it's sort of like.
Wanting to have a drive-through, wanting to have certain things, you just, that's what their corporate model is. But do we have to conform to that? I don't know, I don't think so. I would hope not. Looking at it as a case study, I'm just looking on Google Earth at the Broadridge Center along Broadway.
Yeah, with Andy's Custer.
Good example of what is happening, 'cause I think that's a mostly fairly recent signage, you know, there. It's electronic sign on the top, it's a Broadridge vertically on the side, and it's got like ten different companies, you know, that are in that shopping center, very small print underneath it. And not all of them are represented, like Manah Bakery, I know, I saw somebody out there with a sign a couple of weeks ago, trying to get people to come in there.
I went there, you can barely see it when you're even in the mall.
Right.
But, yeah, they're, they're not on the pylon? They're not even on the pylon?
They're not on the pylon, although there's that, um, uh, variable message board on top, and it probably flashes up every once in a while, but.
I think those, we should restrict totally, those shouldn't be permitted. I don't wanna see.
That's a big sign, and then right next door is the Car Wash, right? The Car Wash has fairly tall, looks like it's as tall as the building is. Very colorful, and it also has a variable message board on it, flashing different metal, we're hiring, you know, that type of stuff. So, you know, I think that's a good example of what we're getting now.
I think it's very interesting to me that these kind of signs, we're getting these kind of signs, and we're also seeing a lot of, these are high incident corridors, Broadway, especially around, that's one of the big danger intersections, that one there, where Ridge hits Broadway, there's another one two blocks down. And signage is like that is really a distracting factor, and a lot of the collisions on these corridors are rear ends. It's because somebody didn't hit their brakes in time, and all of this distracted signage is probably contributing. I don't know this, I don't, I haven't studied it, but it's not good, wanna less distracted roadway for people driving. They shouldn't be.
It's probably people looking at their map on their.
They're looking at their map.
They're not looking at the sign, they're looking at the map on their car.
But we really, we have filled the space of the driver's view with phones, with signs, everything's in motion. It's, I think there's safety reasons to, to restrict moving-type signs, honestly.
That's not a, that's, that's a pretty good point, actually, I think. Particularly when, when you start factoring in light, glare, and everything else from those things.
I'm telling you, that ACC sign on Santa Fe is blinding at nine, blinding. I mean, I, I mean, there, it, it has purples and lavenders that glow out, 'cause they're school colors, purple. And it is a absolute, and then across the street is Hudson Garden doing the same thing. It's like a mini Vegas Strip right there, it's not good. Those are high incident corridors and they're all bad, they're badly designed at the road level and they're, I think the signage is just another, it's like a death by a thousand cuts, and unfortunately, that could literally be death in that sentence for some people. So, I mean, I know we probably can't control ACC signs because it's an education institution, they probably get permission to do whatever they want, like schools or state. I don't know if they come to us for signage.
Somebody else, I believe, schools still have to, uh, discuss zoning, I don't think that's, really? Like, I'm not sure.
I know the public school system does not.
They have, so they have to reach out to the, the planning division and at least discuss their plans with them.
Yeah, but we don't have any kind of veto or control, right?
They have their own set of rules and regulations, and for the most part, most schools are willing to work with us. I don't think anything's outrageously out there.
Except that ACC sign. I mean, that they were, it's, ooh, wow, ooh, sign off on that. And Hudson Gardens then got in on it across the street, and now we're in absolute corridor Vegas. And this, and, and for green is scaring the bejesus out of me already, looking at the, I, when we saw that plan, I don't remember pad retail, eight pad retails along, nobody proposed that.
It looks a little different.
That was not in their master plan, nothing like it. Uh, that's a big bait and switch, but that's another topic entirely. But I just, I worry that that's where we're going with our corridors. And I can't say that I see it comporting well with our comp plan at all, uh, even though these are corridors. Uh, I mean, high vehicular corridors, um, I think we wanna be conservative. I agree with Craig's summation.
So it sounds like a subject we could talk a lot about. Uh, Jared, I wanna make sure, did you get the type of feedback that you need to?
Yeah, I think I, I took some notes, yeah, absolutely.
Any questions for us, or?
I think it's time, we'll have a, um, as I mentioned, we want to just kind of high-level chat about this at, uh, with, at the joint meeting, but then the next, uh, opportunity would be, um, when we get together to review ordinance language. So I think I've taken away, you know, make sure that it's, uh, uniform. You know, fewer signs, potentially looking at more of a roadway classification. You know, for instance, yeah, the example shown, you had two pretty prominent roadways, but then the others, even though they were public, um, they weren't prominent roadways. So maybe, uh, looking at, you know, either a discount or not counting those all. You know, we talked about an acreage versus a road linear, there's a number of different ways to potentially, um, you know, come at this.
Could be road width, could be the width of the roads, a lot of.
Size of the physical separation of the road. Santa Fe is very wide, so bigger signs maybe, I don't know, but, yeah, there's a lot of calculus.
So we'll, we'll sharpen our pencils a little bit and look at, uh, you know, I, as I mentioned, it's not set in stone to begin with, it's not our, uh, document that we're recommending approval of right now, that's why we have this session. So appreciate all the input.
There's no intent to bring a consultant in, you're gonna do a staff?
No, we, we do actually have, um, a consultant on board right now doing a lot of research for us because of some of our staff limitation, so, um, we're working on, on that right now. We, uh, have, um, a small amount budgeted each year for, uh, some consulting services, but in order to attempt to keep that, you know, as low as I can and to keep them working on research, I didn't have them here this evening, so.
It's always helpful to have, uh, little case studies, you know, just, okay, just a gen- generic case study. It says, okay, this is what it would look like with this type of signage. Now, it's kind of the same with the, you know, the land use or the, the zoning edits that we're making, like, and what would a duplex look like in this type of property? What would a sign, you know, a, a sign that meets these requirements look like on a property?
I mean, are any of the developments you're working on now, like?
Ever be coming aboard with a sign plan? Maybe this would be good.
Case study, but it's a real one, just show us what you're.
What it's looking like at this stage, if you're working on any sign plan, maybe that's a, a real-world example we could put our teeth into. 'Cause it is difficult with this abstraction of, I don't know, like twenty?
That may not be the best idea, in case we don't move forward with this MSP processes, that they ask for variance, and so it would end up being a quasi judicial matter that AAC would take a look at. And so for us to bring a case study on that may not be the best idea at this juncture. But no, completely.
It seems like if it's already being laid out in front of you with the options, like, well, this is what they're, what. Permitting this, but yeah, I can see where that. Strip all the names, all the street names, all the things, all the logos off, just boxes.
Can't even have a map.
Just change it, add some extra roads in there to confuse it, get rid of the river, and then just show us some, use the same drawings, minus all the identifying marks. I don't need to see the logos or the color, I just would like to see the height of the monuments and what the pylons are looking like.
Here's what a sign looks like on a quad road.
Well, a quad road is one of those public space, it's a city on road.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a tough one, well, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for asking our opinions.
Any other measure of comment? Otherwise, I'll read the adjournment. With no further business, I adjourn this session at seven forty-six P M. Thank you, uh, Jared.
Good to see.